Good morning, everyone. I'm Atlanta City Councilmember Byron Amis, Chair of the Transportation Committee, and we're officially called the Work Session on Street Parking Management to order. It is now 10 o'clock. I am joined by my colleagues, Councilmember Wong to my far left and to my immediate left, Councilmember Dozier, and as he walks in, Councilmember Matt Westmoreland as well. So I guess that takes all the subtleties and pleasantries out the way. We would jump into, straight into presentations. Mr. John Bailey.
Good morning, everybody. I really appreciate the invitation to be here. My name is John Bailey. I'm with the Natural Resources Defense Council. We go by NRDC. I was told I have 15 minutes to give this presentation, so I am committed to keep to that timeline. But I thought I'd start with just introducing myself and introducing NRDC and why we're here. National Environmental Group work on a variety of issues related to renewable energy, lead pipes, saving public lands, but also have had a keen interest in making sure, or really working with cities in partnership to make sure they're helping to achieve their public health and human health goals, which is really important because I think cities are kind of managed and run by real people solving really real problems. We've done that in Atlanta and a variety of other cities around the country. The City Energy Project, working on energy efficiency and affordable housing developments. We're part of the American Cities Climate Challenge, which Atlanta was a part of from 2019 to 2022, and also the Bloomberg American Sustainable Cities. So really excited to be here today. I come at this as a climate advisor through the American Cities Climate Challenge. It's not my job now, but just like you all had one back in 2019 through 2022, I was doing that in the city of San Antonio, which is where I flew in from yesterday. And I was working with the city and the transit agency via there on a variety of transportation policies there. So that's who NRDC is. That's who I am. Happy to talk more after the meeting about kind of our experience. With that, I'll, and if somebody able to, oh, got it right here? Thank you. I appreciate it. With that, I'll kind of get going. You know, the urban curb is a limited resource, but it's a resource that is just increasingly in demand nowadays. I'm not going to go through all of these, but let's just take goods movement for one, which I listed on there. We think of goods movement as parcel delivery, freight, all those issues. But now we have on-demand groceries and delivery goods. Again, was not as much of an issue maybe 10 years ago. Since COVID, it has ballooned. It looks like that's maybe plateaued a little bit, but it's not going away. That's a growing demand on our curb that really didn't exist maybe 20, 30, even 10 years ago as much. Passenger access. Think of that as valet, taxi, bus stops. Now we have companies like Uber and Lyft. Again, weren't even a thing 20 years ago. Now it's really transformed in urban areas for transportation system. I know you even have, I saw yesterday, a Waymo autonomous vehicles, and I saw that yesterday in Atlanta. I took my first one last month in Austin with my 18-year-old daughter, who was petrified of them. It's the last thing she wanted to do, and now she thinks it's the best thing since sliced bread. I'm not getting the whole discourse right now, if they're good, bad, or ugly, but I'm saying they're happening. They're happening now, and we have to plan for those. So again, something we never thought about before. So I'm not going to, I will mention active travel, biking, scooters, pedestrians, handicap people, lots of places that were having these kind of difficult interactions sometimes between modes, especially on the sidewalk, making it unsafe for pedestrians. A lot of places are looking at corrals or micro mobility, which is to be celebrated, to be encouraged. But again, it's one more, one more acclaim on that urban curb, that limited resource. I'll skip this next slide in the interest of time and get right to it. So I was asked today to talk about various curb management strategies. I found it kind of easy to kind of bucket them into four different buckets, kind of like with Olympic diving, there's levels of difficulty here. You know, the top two are relatively easy to implement, and it gets a little bit more difficult as you kind of go on, which I'll go on to today. But again, with levels of difficulty, it's important to understand that we get greater impact sometimes if we take some more time and think of something kind of really creative and novel. What was really creative and novel maybe five years ago is now becoming more mainstream. And I'll kind of share those examples with some case studies we'll get to in just a minute. So time limits, I'm sorry, forgot to move the slide. Time limits, I'm sure this sign exists all over Atlanta. Not a bad thing at all, but what we find is that in places of high demand, they often are not very, very effective at kind of managing parking demand and supply. My point isn't that we should not get rid of them by any stretch of the imagination. I'm just saying that there's high costs to enforcing that, and enforcement is really the key to make sure these actually work. So in areas of high demand, it's just not really managing demand that effectively because frankly, people poach on those spots, which I'm sure we've all seen. Of course, nobody here would have done it, I'm sure. I never would have by any stretch of the imagination, but it's, people have been known to go beyond their two-hour limit for sure. Go on to use limits, which is segregating the types of uses. So this is where you have certain times for loading, for freight loading, other issues as well. I see this very common in downtowns, freight loading zones. Also passenger drop-off, you see that where oftentimes at big transportation centers like airports and convention centers. Again, good thing, important part of the mix, but again, absent really strong enforcement, it doesn't really manage demand that well. All right, so now we're at pricing, kind of where the fun starts. And this is, I think, where it's interesting. I'll talk about some freight pricing opportunities, which I'd like to talk to you all about, and also different examples around the country of passenger pricing as well. There's nothing new about this. We have the old-school example of parking meters, which just two years ago, I kind of gave up my collection of quarters in my glove compartment that I was always using for parking meters, once I realized those are becoming antiques in a lot of places. And I don't even know if it's legal currency anymore because it's been so long since I've used them. But nothing new about pricing. Parking meters kind of worked fine. New school is the kind of mobile payment apps, which all of us have, which I think are more efficient, good solution. I know that I get frustrated by all the different apps on my phone now I have, and you lose your credit card or something like that, you got to go back and do it. But that's the world we live in. It is what it is, and it's fine. Finally, I'm going to get to, in a minute here, performance-based pricing, also called demand-based pricing, where you're seeing real, real results and real effectiveness at a curb management strategy. I'll mention one example from the District of Columbia on freight, on freight pricing. They implemented a commercial loading zone scheme in 2015, which decreased the number of double parking violations in non-truck parking by 50%. It was for sure initially met with pushback in 2007, when it was a pilot program from a lot of the freight companies. But in 2015, when it became a program for the whole district, a lot of the freight companies actually came out and advocated for it and supported it. Because what they found is that yes, there was a price where there was not a price before, but what they were able to get with that was increased parking reliability and time savings for loading and unloading. And so that is, I think, a theme I'll kind of come back to again and again, is the goal of this should really be, how can you make parking kind of easier and simpler for companies and people to get? And pricing is a way to do that. I'll next go to more of a passenger car option. This is in San Francisco, and it's called SF Park. Again, primary focus from the Municipal Transportation Association in San Francisco was to make it easier to park. And what this meant was hourly meter prices kind of went up and down based upon demand. So in some neighborhoods in the pilot zone, you actually had meters going to go up when it was places of high demand. In other places where there actually was not much demand, you were able to kind of lower prices over time. And what they found is that even as San Francisco population, economy, and overall parking demand grew, parking availability dramatically grew in those San Francisco pilot areas. So more people were coming, more sales taxes being generated, but actually there was more parking available because they were basing that pricing based upon demand. Sales tax revenue actually rose over 35% in pilot zones compared to 20% in the control zones. Decreased parking, decreased parking search, that's a silly way to put it. The amount of time people were spent circling the block looking for parking decreased by 43% because there was more parking available based upon that pricing. So really, really important because all of it, that's one of the key challenges with urban pollution, is people driving all around all the time looking for parking. But in this place, you actually had that, again, that reliability, that parking would be there when you needed it. They did a survey of the program after five years of it being in existence, and turns out average meter rates actually went down 4%. So this wasn't a way just like gain more money necessarily, because in certain streets, it did rise, but in a lot of streets, it didn't rise at all. In fact, in 81% of the meters, it didn't change at all. It was just in these very specific spots that you were able to change the pricing to meet the demand. Next, I'll talk about smart loading and flex zones. This is kind of, again, maybe five years ago, it seemed as really novel, but increasingly, it's become a lot more common. This started in Nashville last year. I'll mention kind of a Pittsburgh example in a minute here. I'll get to flex zones first, though. You know, flex zones are multi-use zones along the curb whose purpose changes based on the surrounding land use. So again, it's not just, I mentioned those use limits before, where you're kind of really segregating uses. In places like Seattle, for instance, now that's had this for about 10 years, you may have in the morning, a transit lane. Mid-morning, you have delivery availability for freight. During the day after that, you have parking available. And in the evening, especially in places with lots of nightlife and activities, it's more for passenger drop-off. So it changes throughout the day, and it's based upon the surrounding land use. You don't just necessarily have a dictate where it's only going to always be this one thing. You have flexibility in your zoning code to allow for different uses based upon that land use. I'll mention a smart loading example in Pittsburgh. Again, this uses technology, and I'll get to that kind of at the end, and the pluses and minuses of that. But uses the parking system based upon sensors and connected devices and cameras, which relates or communicates, rather, with delivery drivers' cell phones, and allows them to reserve a space. So they know that space will be there when they need to do that drop-off. Again, when it started off as a pilot with 20 zones, there was for sure some skepticism and some apprehension about the program. Now it has grown to over 75 locations, and there has been increased support for it over time, which is why it's grown, you know, more than threefold over time. At the pilot locations, as I say in the slide, the city recorded a 95% reduction in double parking instances, double parking instances. Because what's happening a lot now, it's kind of the Wild West out there. And with all those increasingly increasing demands at the curb, you have people double park, triple park, either doing drop-offs for Uber or Lyft, or delivery drivers, a very, very, very unsafe situation. Again, with some pricing that provides the reliability and dependability that you know, when you need to get there, you can get there, which benefits both the delivery drivers, also benefits the local businesses. I mentioned smart technology integration. I'll just mention a couple of, when you kind of review the literature, three buckets that the companies in the cities that have implemented this suggest you think about. First is data collection. Doing arrival mode surveys is a good way, that's just a fancy way of saying, intercepting people when they're going to the business or the school or wherever it is to find out, how'd you get here? And was it by driving? Was it by transit? Was it by walking? Was it by biking? There is a lot of, it kind of helps with some sort of myth and facts a little bit about how people got there. I'll just give some examples of where this happened. In Los Angeles, certainly known pretty famously as a car-oriented city, merchants on Cesar Chavez Street estimated 36% of patrons were arriving by car and none arrived by transit. In fact, what you found is 7% drove and 46% arrived by transit. In Nostron Avenue in Brooklyn, again, same sort of skepticism that many people were arriving by bus, and turns out that 33% were actually arriving by bus. I can go on and on and on about this. And this is just what's important about the public policy creation, is that it's going to be more helpful, especially as you all develop the RFP, to make sure you're, we're all operating on the same kind of real information. And nothing about what I'm suggesting means that every neighborhood should do what I'm suggesting here. I've tried to provide different options, but in some places it will. And let's make sure when we pick those places, that it's based on real-world data. Enforcement is also key. Enforcement is, especially when you use technology. There are ways you can do it for sure, using a person who actually puts a ticket on the window. But being able to utilize technology is going to make a big difference, and that's where you see those biggest kind of impacts. I doubt that Pittsburgh would have gotten that 95% reduction in double parking if it wasn't through automatic enforcement. And again, communicating about everything all the time, I think especially in an area, in an era of cynicism about this is just about revenue generation, and the city just wants the money. I think really communicating the why is really, really, really important and being as transparent as you can for the rationale with all the different stakeholders, whether those are like neighborhood residents, delivery drivers, et cetera. Coming up here in the last couple of slides, thanks for your patience, I want to talk about parking benefit districts. And this is just as the name kind of suggests, in places where you start metering pricing or parking, or pricing parking, are there ways to make sure that you want to provide real-world tangible benefits to businesses and neighborhood residents to make use of that funding? So I'll just mention an example in Austin, Texas. I live in San Antonio. Austin's kind of right up the road, state capital, large university, kind of an events, a music event kind of economy there. So major parking dramas like all the time. And what they did, they started pricing some of the neighborhood parking, but kept 51% of that revenue within neighborhoods. And that was able to go to crosswalks, bike lanes, shaded transit stops, et cetera, even like flower buckets, I mean, flowerpots, everything from like the small scale to the big scale. That provides real-world tangible benefits that people can see every day. I think that's really, really, really important and important to consider when you talk about raising more revenue. In conclusion, my last slide here, just as you'd consider this kind of new RFP and things you want to think about, you know, think about, I'd like to consider that the status quo is not sustainable. I think this mix of shifting consumer preferences around on-time delivery, increased demands on curb space, and this growing interest, the city of Atlanta to its credit and other places about making sure we're providing a safe environment for all users, the status quo is not going to work, and we have to think differently. Be informed, but don't assume what the market can and cannot provide. This is the area where technology is changing all the time. I'll just give one quick anecdote. I mentioned I was a climate advisor for the city of San Antonio back in 2021. We were tasked with providing 25 publicly accessible EV chargers in the city of San Antonio, and found out at the last minute that the city was going to provide no subsidy for this, but still do the RFP. And we're like, well, that's going to be challenging. I mean, we got it, it almost seemed like it wouldn't be serious because San Antonio is not a place with great EV adoption, and who's going to respond to that RFP? Turns out that we got five bids. Three were great bids and picked one company to provide those publicly accessible EV charging stations, and they're growing every year. And I used that as an example where our assumption and our thought was that no one's going to respond to this. But that was an industry that was changing all the time. And in fact, they saw a market where it would work. And by keeping more of the revenue themselves, the city was able to support them a little bit with some engineering work near their stations, that we actually ended up having a really successful program, even though our bias was no one's going to respond to this RFP. I mentioned the rely on data, not assumptions, not anecdotal data, as a friend of mine calls it sometimes, very, very important. So we're all operating on the same real-world information. And communicate early and often. You know, a colleague of mine who was working on transit funding always says, to talk about the brownie, not the recipe. And sometimes we get policy wonks like me who want to talk about the details. This is a detail-oriented work session, so we should talk about the details. But I think when we're being communicated to the public, talk about the benefits of this and that reliability to making sure it's easier and safer to park, to walk, to bike, to roll, to wherever you need to go in Atlanta. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, sir. Before we move to the next presentation, just want to ask my colleagues, do you have any clarifying questions or more information that you need to seek?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Firstly, just let me say, Mr. Bailey, thank you so much for being here. I know Atlanta is not your regular stopping ground, but I think it's important to hear your perspective considering the work that you've been doing.
Great city. Glad to be here.
And we have a lot of room for improvement. I will say, as a cyclist, as a person with two kids and an age of five pushing my stroller, well, thankfully they're bigger than needing a stroller these days, but you know, we ride the e-bike, we take transit. And so I think this is a topic that is, I'm glad we're having this conversation, but it's been far too long. I know I have some folks here from my Castleberry Hill community who's been fighting tooth and nail to make sure that we can get some sort of curbside and parking management for the community. What you brought up about the parking benefit districts, I think is something that Castleberry Hill has brought up, is something that our community members in Midtown have brought up as well. And so I think there's a lot of interest in that aspect of what you're presenting today. And so as we continue with these presentations, both for ATL DOT, we'd love to hear your kind of thoughts on that. And if we were to pursue something like that, what potential operational implications could there be? I recognize that our parking revenue is set for a particular reason. I know that state preempts us for, we can't do a parking tax, for instance, but can we use fees to have a neighborhood benefit program? And that might be also a question for law department as well as what possibilities are available to us as a city from a policy standpoint to implement some of these best practices that you've seen. So it's less of a question for you, but definitely as we are going into our next round of presentations, as we get ready to think about our discussion going forward, want to make sure we're thinking about how can the city of Atlanta be forward-looking and be more aligned with our peer cities to make sure that with all the big events that we have happening, that we're working to make our downtown community much more livable than it's been in decades. How can we implement some of these best practices in a way that makes our city better and more whole? So that's a question, but just for the folks in the room who are going to be coming up to the podium or have an opportunity to speak later, think about that as y'all are presenting and responding.
And Mr. Chair, Member of this commission, can I just quickly respond?
Yes, absolutely.
I would just say that this presentation was very much 30,000 feet above the ground. I have lots more case studies, a lot more details, and I think perhaps even more importantly, connections to the cities that have done this. And if there's a way we can kind of foster some peer-to-peer communication between those places. Of course, you're a member of NACDO, the National Association of City and County Transportation Officials. They can do that as well. So I'm happy to make that happen and get into more of the details. So thank you.
But thank you, sir, and thank you for the presentation and information as well. Thank you. Next, we have Commissioner Cavaness, ATL DOT. We actually have been joined by our colleague, Councilwoman Bark Tiar. So.
Good morning, council. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to present our future parking and curb management within the city of Atlanta. My name is Solomon Cavaness, Commissioner of the Atlanta Department of Transportation. This is obviously a huge opportunity for us to collaborate with our communities, with our neighborhoods, and with you directly to think about what the future of the city looks like. We have a lot we can look forward to in the city, and I have an amazing team behind me who's going to present our Atlanta On-Street Parking and Curb Management Program. And we look forward to working with you and your support in advocating for Atlanta's future. So with that, I'm going to bring up Ms. Deputy Commissioner Betty Smoot-Madison, and she will begin the presentation.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good morning, council. Betty Smoot-Madison, Deputy Commissioner for Strategy and Planning with ATL DOT. As Commissioner mentioned, we really do appreciate this opportunity. I think Mr. Bailey gave some great best practices that we wholeheartedly are in agreement with for the most part. There's a lot of details and strategies that we are working through as we develop the RFP, working through legal ramifications and restrictions and kind of working around some of those things. But I think for sure, we are in alignment as we move forward and start to think about how we can improve our curbs, our streets overall. You'll hear us talk a good bit about the Comprehensive Transportation Plan. That will be our largest opportunity that is forthcoming very soon to really make some of the functional, policy-related frameworks that will help us really determine how our curbs function and start to develop the regulations for how they function, and then really start to stand that up through the future service provider. So again, we appreciate this opportunity to come and talk to you. We will be sharing a little bit of the history of the program to date. We have an active contract that is in place now, which we have had for about eight years and have had many great advances and wins and successes. And so we will be sharing and highlighting some of that, as well as sharing information about our micro mobility program. Again, that is a sort of function of the curb, and we have made great strides and advancements in that. And so we'll be sharing that as well. And I'll share a little bit more detail about the CTP that is upcoming also. So to get started, we definitely wanted to start with sharing the goals of our program. And so of course, we are looking to improve overall safety. You are very familiar with our Vision Zero program, and our primary goal is making streets safer for all users. And so we recognize that our curb has a demand, whether it's related to parking, people loading, commercial loading, bike lanes, or micro mobility devices. We have to balance all of those various demands and uses. And so the goal of this future RFP and curb management program is to improve safety, efficiency, and operations of that program. And then the ultimate customer and end-user experience. So whether it's the person that's parking a vehicle or a device, or whether it is the person that actually has received a citation, working through all of those processes and procedures to make sure that we have a seamless end-to-end experience for all users. Second, I think Mr. Bailey talked a lot about technology. Technology is definitely going to be a big component of this next RFP. So we want to make sure that the service provider that we bring on is able to deploy innovative and smart technology solutions. We are looking to optimize pricing. We agree with many of the strategies that have been done nationally from a demand-based pricing or performance-based pricing, but here in the state of Georgia, there are some limitations that we are really kind of limited in how we set our on-street parking pricing. And it is essentially restricted to be equivalent to what we expend for the cost of the program, which is why we are doing the fee study. But we know that there are, you know, the on-street parking fees have not changed for 10 years or more, and our costs for personnel, our costs for technology, all of that has increased significantly. So we do believe there is an opportunity for there to be increases in that pricing. And then of course, ensuring, using technology to ensure that we have real-time data to support our daily policy decisions. So again, that is something we are playing up a lot in this next RFP, is the use of data and having access and being able to easily integrate those data and technology solutions. And then lastly, establishing the long-term curb management framework and policy. So that's the CTP, the Comprehensive Transportation Plan, that we've mentioned, and I'll talk a little bit further about that. We do have a good bit that we'll be covering in this presentation, but we are trying to keep it compact. So I will shortly hand it off to our On-Street Parking Program Director, Calvin Watts, to talk about the history of the current program, to talk about how that's currently managed, the various permits that sits under that program, and then to highlight, again, the wins and successes that we've seen over the life of the current contract. And then we will move into, I'll come back and talk a bit about the RFP and how that's being developed and some of the key goals that's a part of that. And then we'll cover next steps and timeline. Our Mobility Planning Director will then come up, John Saxton, and we'll talk about the micro mobility program and updates for that. And then I'll round it out with an update on the CTP, and then we'll end with any questions. So briefly, just wanted to provide a quick summary of highlights through this presentation. So the current parking contract is with SP Plus. That contract started in 2017, and we've had some additional extensions and month-to-months that have occurred and been authorized through council. And the current expiration is October 2026, which allows us additional time to just work through the particulars of the RFP and the fee studies, et cetera. The program has realized numerous accomplishments over the course of the contract, the current contract, including technology improvements, asset and equipment gains, and data and operational improvements. And so Calvin, again, will go through the details of that. As mentioned before, a fee study is underway in collaboration with Department of Finance. As mentioned before, a fee study is underway in collaboration with Department of Finance and a consultant, PFM. And so they are looking at all of our costs related to running this program, everything from administration to supplies, to personnel, salaries, to technology. Technology needs not just what we're using today, but what, you know, projecting forward of what the technology needs are, everything from vehicle usage, equipment, assets. So they are looking at everything related to what it costs us to run this program. And again, we do believe that we've, those costs have significantly increased over the years, which will hopefully justify an increase in our pricing. There, you know, as mentioned, I think Councilmember Dozier mentioned this, there are numerous opportunities to improve. We do believe that the contract that we've had over the last eight years or so has been strong. There's a lot of great elements and components in that current contract that we are pulling forward into the new one. But there are, there is room for improvement, and we recognize those areas where we can get better. And we do believe that through this next contract, as well as through the development and finalization of the Comprehensive Transportation Plan, which will help us really strengthen what happens on our streets and how it's regulated, that is really going to be the catalyst for the change that we are able to implement through this next contract and any future ones after that. And then just briefly, as I mentioned, the micro-mobility program is also an element of the curb, and we've had significant improvements, everything from how it's managed to day-to-day coordination with vendors. And we've had nothing but record ridership levels year after year. So we do believe that dockless scooters and other micro-mobility devices really do provide a transportation option for Atlanta's residents as well as visitors, and it is a program that has gone strong. And we're just looking through this next RFP, we are looking to just make that program even stronger. Okay, so I will hand it over to Calvin to talk through the highlights and history of the parking program to date.
Good morning, Council. Calvin Watts, Atlanta Department of Transportation Parking Director. I just want to talk to you briefly about the highlights of the history of our parking program. Sorry, go back. As you see up here, we have public on-street residential permits, as well as the valets and the park for hires and temp for hires. The one thing that's really good about what we see in bucket number one, the public on-street parking is we own the assets. Currently, we have 288 multi-space meters in the on-street right-of-way, covering 2,600 spaces in the right-of-way. Residential parking permits, we have 18 neighborhoods right now, roughly about 1,800 residential permits that our team actually work on, day in and day out, making sure those things are streamed online as well as outward-facing to the public. We have the valets that everybody is near and dear to that we work with. Currently, on the valets, there's about 15 active valets. Those are the ones that we see that are good actors. Of course, there's a lot of bad actors out there that we'll talk about later on at another time. But right now, we have 15 active valets in the right-of-way. Along with that, we have 19 commercial loading and loading. Some of our things are prohibited with the commercials right now because of we have some restrictions that we'll talk about as this RFP develops. Only thing that we can do with the commercial valets right now is market those commercial permits to any vehicles that are under 10,000 pounds. Park for hires that we have in our system, roughly right now, 283 park for hires. What is park for hires? That's your surface lots, that's your parking decks. And then we have our infamous temp for hires, 28 active temp for hires. That's on file. We do know during a ride along with APD this week, we found quite a few challenges with some folks that does not have their permits, but we're working on getting those onboard with us real soon. So we had some successes this past week with APD over in our Vine City neighborhood. Some of our successes that we've had, like I stated, 2,600 on-street meter parking spaces, and we've identified more spaces for expansions for that. Our program realized accomplishments during this current term, ranging from the technology advancements, equipment assets, as well as our operation improvements. One of our improvements that we've had is we went to the outward-facing of residential permits. Those residential permits gives each customer an opportunity to do their residential permits real-time, whether it's a visitor's pass or whether it's their own pass. And some of the challenges that we learned about residential was that if a car was out of service, that customer would have to wait till the weekend or next week to get that online. Well, they don't have to face those challenges anymore. They can simply do their guest passes, they can simply do their residential permits themselves. So that's outward-facing. So we're very proud of what we did with that. Currently, we're in partnership with SP Plus and Automotives. That's something we learned about the last year. We were trying to improve the safety of what the bike lanes are doing out there in the right-of-way. We've learned a lot about those bike lanes from the corridors that we've teamed up with Automotives about. We found the real-time detection on that, and we realized that an average vehicle in the right-of-way is there five minutes. So by the time we deploy enforcement, those vehicles are pretty much gone. So we're still working on that, we're still having those ongoing discussions, and you know, we're looking at efficiencies to improve enforcement on that. We did revise the public parking park for hires. Those permits improved dramatically in compliance. We've seen a significant increase to about 90% complacency. Every now and then, we will have to send out a cease and desist when we learn that those permits are not online and we don't have active permits out there. So we do a great job of tracking that. We track the temp for hires as well as the park for hires as well. But the great thing is, all the equipment in the right-of-way, as I stated, is fully amateurized. We own the equipment. Some of the things that we do are not just with the infrastructures, but we also use signage as well, too. We also relaunched the mobile parking apps that allow customers through pay-by apps. That's been significant, where a lot of customers are extending their parking when they're away from their vehicles. They no longer have to run up to the meter to pay the multi-space meter, they can do it from their app in the comfort of their car, the business of where they are, a meeting. Don't have to worry about that. We also have an internal great team of parking administration review. What that review does is, a customer has at least three chances to contest a citation. We implemented this because we learned in our previous contract, this was not in place. So if a customer is not satisfied with the findings of what the service providers offered when they appeal, they actually get to appeal within our department to get that handled and rectified. And what we do with our team, we do a deep scrub and look at those citations and see the validity of that citation that has been issued. A lot of our successes have come from benchmark studies that we've done over the years. Since I've been here since 2016, we've done a significant improvement of all electronic permits from residential's as well as, as well as our permits for park for hires, temp One thing before I take a step back, one thing that we are proud of is that we've taken the liberty to put everything in GIS format. That GIS format covers our meters for any meter that's on there, it's GIS-formatted. Our park for hires are online for GIS, our temp for hires, and our valets are online with GIS mapping. Currently, we're working on residential's to get a GIS map. And also, we are dealing with, as Betty talked about, DC Madison talked, Smoot-Madison talked about, smart loading technology. We have ongoing conversations with our service, current service provider and our vendor to talk about the digital process, the open APIs that we can use to benefit, and the lessons that we've learned from the current contract moving forward to improve the safety, loading and loading zones, all the technologies that is out there, we're currently exploring that. With that, I will turn it back over to DC Smoot-Madison.
All right, thanks, Calvin. Again, thank you to the parking team. They are a small but mighty force. And again, they have been able to make some significant strides over the past almost decade that Calvin has been working with this team on improving our parking program. So we're really proud of where it is today, but it's, you know, we recognize that there is a significant amount of improvements that can happen. And so as, before I dive into kind of the goals of the next RFP, I did want to kind of make some distinguishment between when we're saying parking versus curb management. So today's contract is primarily focused and authorized to manage and enforce anything related to on-street parking. Anything outside of that, it is very difficult for us to do with this current contract. So that is a major win as we stand up this next RFP to really start to transition it more to a not just parking enforcement contract, but more of a curb management contract. So when we talk about the curb management, the big piece of that is the technology and the ability to deploy certain smart technology solutions. And so because the current contract was a little bit restricted, we were not, there's a lot of technology that we have not been able to deploy. And so as Calvin mentioned, they have, the parking team has been attending conferences, having peer exchange, talking with peer cities about best practices and gaining all of that knowledge to learn what's out there and what's in the industry, meeting with vendors, understanding what technology is available. And so we have a good awareness of it, but again, just kind of due to the way the current contract is worded and limited, we just have, some of that we just have not been able to deploy. So this next contract will really start to help us move towards a more holistic, all-curb elements, including kind of commercial loading, passenger loading, and really starting to include technology that will help us better manage those. So to dive into the goals of this next RFP, you know, as we worked through the development of the scope of work with the consultant, again, there were, there was a lot of nuances that we had to work around, things related to state code, things related to city code. So we had to kind of have a lot of engagement and coordination with other city partners to see what our limitations were, to see what we can do, what we can't do. And so I think after working through those things, we have a good path forward. We, first things first, as we release this RFP and start to evaluate vendors, we are looking for a highly qualified service provider, one that has the qualifications, the experience of working in a city the size of Atlanta, and especially even larger. We know that Atlanta's growing, and there's a growing demand and growing needs. And so we want a service provider that has that experience. There's a lot of parking providers out there, but not all of them have experience with medium-sized or large-size cities. So that is something we are definitely going to be looking towards. Also, that they have the staffing capacity from administration to operations people, to maintenance staff, to enforcement. And I'll talk a little bit about some of the key strategies, such as redundancies in their subcontractors. And so one of the limitations with our current contract is that the service provider is only authorized to utilize one sub related to like security services, and the security services subconsultant is who staffs all of the enforcement officers. So if they only have the one, you know, they're, again, limited, but being able to have some redundancies in those services and those subs, again, opens up our ability to increase our manpower, increase the workforce and number of officers that are on the ground. And so again, having key personnel, we are specifically calling out the type of personnel we want that are going to be needed to really manage this. And it could be everything from marketing people to community engagement people. And of course, you know, as I mentioned before, the administrative, the key finance folks, the operations people and maintenance. We are seeking more improvements in enforcement strategies, such as utilizing non-sworn officers for minor violations. It could be related to permits. And so those are strategies that we are pursuing as we have conversations with other city stakeholders and as we build out this RFP. Also, as we roll out more, you know, it's been said before, as we roll out more dedicated spaces, such as dedicated and protected bike lanes, we want to ensure that we are able to enforce those spaces. This is, I think, primarily a capacity issue because it requires sworn officers to issue those citations. And so again, we are looking, as we evaluate future providers, what is their capacity to bring on and secure and retain enough talent and enough enforcement manpower to be able to enforce these specific violations? And then, of course, there's the technology aspect, getting better with integrating, making sure that the provider has access to multiple vendors that can provide these technologies. So again, it's a capacity thing, and I think through expanding the contract and allowing the service provider to have multiple subs will really help open the door for addressing many of the issues that we see on the ground today. We want to balance the needs of various users, so including pedestrian and bicyclists, as we mentioned before, but of course, commercial loading and passenger loading. And a lot of these things will be addressed, as I mentioned before, through our CTP. And I'll go through a bit more detail of how the CTP is going to help us with that, but, you know, being able to designate designated spaces for passenger loading to occur, designated locations for commercial loading to occur, that's where the CTP will come in through that stakeholder engagement and understanding where the needs and demands are. And then we'll be able to really establish those regulations and enforce it through this contract. We know that an efficient curb and parking system will help to minimize and decrease congestion and reduce cars driving around in circles and idling. So again, having better wayfinding systems, app integrations, and of course, as we've said, over into the smart technologies that really help curb these. So that's what we are really elevating through this next RFP. And then the, again, working through the CTP to develop curb typologies based on street type, land use, and understanding context to develop policies and regulations for those curbs. We know there's a lot of areas where the curb is underutilized, and so bringing more spaces online and maximizing the performance of those spaces. This could be through various pricing. So again, we are looking to, while we may not be able to base the pricing on demand, we do know that there may be a higher cost for us to provide a service in certain areas because there's a high turnover, there's a higher demand for spaces. We may need more enforcement personnel out, we may need more vehicles. The technology that we use in those areas may be greater. So we know that there is a higher cost associated with certain areas. And so while we may not be able to, you know, call it demand-based pricing, we do recognize that there's some opportunities there to consider different pricing for those high-demand I think while we've improved our residential parking permit program, we know there's still some neighborhoods that are significantly impacted by events, special events and major events that occur in our city, or they're just in a high commercial area. And so again, working through, while we do have zones already established through our current contract and have enforcement mechanisms for those zones, we are looking for the provider to really come up with strategies that will help us improve enforcement in those areas. The parking benefit districts, I think that is an ongoing conversation. The CTP will also The CTP will also help us address that as we engage and understand which neighborhoods will best benefit from those, and then start to have those conversations internally around standing up those. So we are essentially supportive of those parking benefit districts. And then lastly, you know, the technology pieces are critical. Year after year, our team is going to industry conferences and exchanging with peers to understand what those solutions are. And so we are excited to be able to deploy them. We want the vendor to come in ready to deploy that technology rather than being restricted with, you know, maybe not having the right subs on the team that does not have access to it. So that's some of the limitations that we've had and seen. So again, this next contract will really empower the service provider to have the right people on their team or the right sub providers on their team that can quickly integrate and deploy various technologies. And we're also, we'll be looking for them, the service provider itself, to have key personnel that are working specifically on technology advancements. And that's something that does not exist today. So just to highlight what the major contract changes and potential is, again, allowing for the redundancies in services and subcontractors, that is the biggest difference that we'll see between the current and what we're moving towards in the future. Another example of this I mentioned with the security service only having one, we also only have one booting and towing sub provider that's on the current contract. So being able to expand that and have multiple will increase that manpower, increase that the capacity of us to be able to get out and address some of the issues that we are seeing. So that redundancies in services and subs is really going to be critical to our success. And then greater technology advancements, I mean, we've said it over and over again, that is the biggest difference between, you know, what exists today and where we're headed is the ability to deploy and integrate those technologies sooner and immediately. And we do recognize there are some changes that will still evolve over time, especially as we work through the CTP and have a greater understanding of where certain needs are, where certain demands are, and how we regulate the curb and along certain streets and neighborhoods. But there are some immediate deployment technologies that could be beneficial, and we are looking to roll that out as a part of, very early on in the next contract. Especially related to real-time information, that's something we don't have today, is the ability to know what's happening on the ground immediately and right now. So technology that gives us that real-time information is key. Improved performance measures and KPIs with the ability to apply performance-based compensation adjustments. So that's something that is also new or will be new under this next contract. We have very strong, at least 10 or so KPIs that we've developed, and everything from, you know, the number of complaints to the number of citations voided, to meeting customer service standards, a great number of KPIs that we'll be monitoring and will be requiring the service provider to report to us on quarterly, and we'll have the ability to adjust their compensation or the financing structure based on their adherence to the KPIs. So that is something that will, we believe will make this next iteration of the program stronger. And then again, we are continuing to explore the use of non-sworn officers. We know there is a limitation in just capacity issue related to having to rely on sworn officers to issue safety violations. So this is a conversation that we're continuing to have, and we'll be looking at what are the things that non-sworn officers can help relieve sworn officers of, and even if it's just as simple as monitoring valet permits or commercial loading permits and things like that. All right, next steps in timeline. So we are actively working on the parking rate and fee study. So that is ongoing coordination with Department of Finance and the consultants, which is PFM. And we've provided them with all of the data that we can provide, just as far as like what our costs are, and so they are doing that study as we speak. And so we anticipate that they will be completing it in September of 2025. And then at that point, whatever the determined and appropriate fee is, we'll be working and coming back to you guys for legislative approval to adopt that new fee. And then soon after that, we anticipate being able to release the RFP and hopefully by the end of the year. So we've got, again, a very compact timeline, but we're working aggressively to try and get these things going and to be able to meet that deadline. There are some additional conversations happening just related to potential legislative actions that may come to you. We're continuing to have the conversations, but one may be specifically related to updating the code, the city code related to our commercial loading operations, as Calvin mentioned. Right now, we issue permits to vehicles that are 10,000 pounds or less. We are looking to increase that, again, because we recognize there are larger vehicles that are utilizing our right-of-way, and so we want to be able to track, monitor, and make sure they are obtaining the right permits and approvals to make their deliveries so that we can kind of keep abreast of what's happening in our right-of-way. So we're looking to increase that, and then there may be some additional language that's changed just in our commercial loading code to make sure that we're able to do some of the enforcement and just to make sure that the next contract can address some of the issues. And then, so I am now going to turn it over to John Saxon to talk through our micro-mobility updates.
Good morning, Council. John Saxon, Mobility Planning Director with ATL DOT. I work on Betty's team with Ashley Finch, who is our Shared Micromobility Manager. She is at a conference this week, so shouldn't, she couldn't be here today, but I'm filling in. And just a few quick slides to talk about our micro-mobility program. So first, just successes. So this is really intended to be an update since the last work session that we had with you this time last year. So in 2024, we saw 2.6 million shared micro-mobility trips. That was an increase of, I think, at least 20% over the year before. And so far, for the first half of 2025, we've seen 1.5 million trips, so trending again 10 to 20% higher than we were last year. So excited about the continued growth in those trips. A big focus over the last year has really been the installation of the micro-mobility corrals that I know many of you are familiar with. We've installed roughly 30 corrals citywide over the last year in partnership with CIDs as well as operators themselves. So we think that is one of the main strategies that we have to address the litter, the scooter litter, Councilmember Dozier, as I think you call it, or the clutter. And we've seen some success there in installation of the physical corrals. But in addition to the physical corrals, we've also instituted some virtual corrals, which are kind of what you see in the app if you're a user for one of the existing operators. And those have been installed primarily in Piedmont Park, Eastside Beltline, and in Little Five Points, some high-demand areas. Ideally, you have both a physical corral and a virtual corral, but the virtual corrals is something that can be implemented within a matter of weeks, where the physical corrals kind of require design, require installation, and that kind of thing. So we're continuing to ramp both up, but that's been a big focus over the last year. In addition to that, just some changes over the last year, extending the curfew the Council approved to 2:00 a.m. to more align operations of micro-mobility devices with transit operations so that somebody's kind of not stranded at the end of a transit trip after midnight so they have an option for a micro-mobility trip in that timeframe. Both operators over the last year have introduced new devices to their fleets, so expanding the types of options that users have, including the seated scooters, and then new and improved devices from what they have offered previously. And then just ongoing coordination with ABI and their new Beltline ambassadors to improve parking and operations along the Eastside Trail. I think that's something where we've seen a lot of improvement over the last year is seeing things more formalized in parking locations as opposed to the clutter that we have seen previously in the program. And then ongoing coordination with our operators to collect data, as Betty and Calvin mentioned, just focusing on collecting data about the program to support incentivizing proper user behavior and mitigate some of those challenges. So two quick slides here just to talk about the upcoming RFP and some of the requirements that we've got included there. The major change, and this relates to the legislation that you've got in front of you for next week about changing the model that we've got from a permit model to a contract model. We see the value there in really being a more formalized and predictable relationship with vendors that is going to be a longer term. So it creates a relationship that both parties can invest in and grow and improve the program. Another focus is really on parking compliance and institution of more parking infrastructure, as I mentioned, just about the corrals. So that's definitely a focus that we've got going into the new contract and working with both what the operators are able to provide as well as what ATL DOT is able to provide when it comes to parking and compliance. We've also got more strict distribution requirements, so putting some limits on the amount of the total fleet that can be deployed in certain areas in the city. So focusing on some of those, you know, high-demand areas, limiting the amount of devices that can be deployed in those areas. We've also asked in the RFP for proponents to provide a safety and responsibility riding plan to evaluate how they're addressing some of the non-compliant rider behavior. So that's something that we'll be looking forward to seeing what proponents are able to provide there and recommendations to address some of those issues. And then, again, kind of a focus on public engagement, education, and providing diverse vehicle types, so including accessible options for users so that the program is open and more available to City of Atlanta residents. And then just a few additional updates about kind of revenue and fees. So we are interested in seeing what proponents can provide to lower user fees so that it, from a cost perspective, it remains available and accessible, affordable for all users. That includes an income-eligible program and then equity trip pricing for users so that we are focusing on providing more affordable rates for some of the equity areas that we have in place. The next piece is really thinking about how we restructure, how revenues are collected for the program. Currently, we have a per-trip sort of annual permit fee as well as a sub-permit fee for operators, but the big change there is that we're going to have a trip fee so that every trip that is taken, there's an amount for each trip that the program is collecting to support some of the infrastructure, as I mentioned, so the development of corrals that we're looking to expand across the city, as well as staffing to support the program. And that revenue model is really just in line with what we've seen from other cities, that they're transitioning both from kind of the permit model as well as to the contract model, and that our pricing is in line with our peers nationally. And then lastly, just kind of about our next steps. So we're looking forward to releasing the RFP as soon as possible, just pending the code changes, as I mentioned earlier, allowing for the change from a permit model to the contract model. Looking forward to evaluating those solicitations in September and October, and then legislating and executing the award of the contract, and then starting the transition period at the beginning of 2026. We are anticipating a 60-day transition period from existing operators and transitioning to the new system, and expect operations to continue through that time period. And then the term of the contract is a base three-year with two one-year extensions. And then I think I'm passing it back to Betty just to talk about upcoming CTP.
Thank you, John. I think this is the last slide, so, and then we'll be able to open it up for discussion. But as we've mentioned, the Comprehensive Transportation Plan is really going to be a catalyst for getting us on track and establishing regulations for the curbs all throughout the city. It gives us a framework to work from and then be able to take that regulatory framework and work with the service provider to implement. So we are excited because we're very close to kicking off. We had a RFP released back in May and received bids back, or proposals back, I'm sorry. And we are scheduled to, those proposals are under evaluation as we speak, and there is a meeting with procurement over, I believe, next week, Monday, to evaluate. And so we'll hopefully have a consultant selected by late next week, and then we'll work to award that contract, and hopefully we'll be kicking off in early September. So we're looking forward to that. But again, there's some key elements that's a part of this Comprehensive Transportation Plan, and I'll kind of quickly go through these. But first is developing street typologies for major streets in the city. We understand that no street is the same. They may be similar, but they have different, you know, context and land uses and zoning. And so having an understanding of all of that, we are hoping to work with communities to really start to develop typologies. This would be building off of the work, some of this typology work to happen within the Central Business District and downtown and midtown areas as a part of ADID's curb management plan. And so we're not looking to recreate anything, but really building upon that work that has been done, but starting to apply those street typologies for streets all throughout the city. So that is going to be a great effort that also gives us design criteria that helps us understand how those streets should be designed in the future. Transit, we are looking to start to have the conversations around what does the next transit investment looks like, look like, what are the next transit priorities? And so those are conversations that will be a part of the CTP. The curbside management, kind of relating back to the street typologies, we're looking to develop curb typologies for the various types of streets that exist. Understanding where businesses are, what the business needs are, where loading needs to happen, where's passenger loading and unloading happening, and where that demand is, and starting to designate spaces to accommodate those needs and uses. And so the curbside management component will, again, be what helps kind of dictate how we regulate the different curbs all throughout the street, I mean, all throughout the city. So that's going to be critical. We can't implement without knowing that and without going through the process of engaging with communities, engaging with businesses, even with commercial companies, the Fedexes and the Amazons that are out there, really understanding what some of their needs are. So that CTP process is going to help us there. Of course, pet and bike planning, so you're probably familiar with the Cycle Atlanta 1.0 and 2.0. As a part of CTP, we're looking at what's 3.0? What are the streets that still need to be done? And then also, what are the next set of streets that are priorities for bike access and protected bike lanes as well as pedestrian movements? So CTP will look at that. Sustainability, we're looking at how do we build out sustainable infrastructure and partnering with our peers in offices sustainability and working with them in their AV, AV and EV deployments. And so starting to look at where does EV charging stations need to be within the public right-of-way, making sure we have a holistic, you know, charging area that may accommodate micro-mobility devices. So those are all of the things that will be looked at, but also green infrastructure, stormwater management, that sustainability plan will start to set goals and priorities related to that. Goods movement, freight plan, looking at where our high-priority truck routes are and how do we accommodate those on those routes, and design for those, but in a safe way that accommodates all of our users and does not, you know, create friction with vulnerable users such as pets and bikes. So again, looking at goods movement and coordinating with those stakeholders to understand needs, routing. to understand needs, routing, building really upon the work that was done through city planning and their Northwest Freight Study and Plan, but really starting to look, take that same framework and apply it citywide. And then another component of that is just asset management, really getting better and more strategic and efficient in how we manage our assets, everything from pavements to sidewalks to signs and signals. And so the CTP, again, will start to set a framework for how we manage all of those. So again, you know, this is something that we, is critical. We're excited about it for ATL DOT. This is our first CTP. But we're not starting from scratch. We're building upon the great work that's been done already through the Atlanta Transportation Plan. But it really will start to lay the groundwork for helping us understand what needs to happen over the next five to 10 years. And I believe that is it. So Will.
You, thank you very much. Yes, we are at the point of discussion, question and answers with the committee. Councilmember Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Deputy Commissioner and the rest of the ATL DOT team. We're putting this present, this thorough presentation together. I was joking with some colleagues, I think we're going in more detail than we've done in some of our more contentious issues that we've had as a city. And so this is how important this issue. So, you know, I'm gonna let that stay for public record. But I think it shows how important this issue is to so many of our citizens. You have so many people from our various communities, you have these vendors, community members who are trying to navigate this issue as best as they can. And I love the fact that we're trying to think about the future of our city in this way. I will say, while I'm appreciative of the work that we're doing around CTP and I know the significant investment in manpower and tax dollars to move that process forward, I'm concerned about the timeline of that, recognizing that we do have World Cup coming next year. We do have another Super Bowl down the way. We do have a lot of work we're doing to make downtown and midtown and Castleberry Hill more livable, that the implementation of some of the things that might come out of that CTP, I would be very interested to try to move the needle as much as we can beyond what we're doing with CTP. As an example, you know, we've been working on our Comprehensive Development Plan. We've been working on zoning 2.0, and yet we still had huge riots in the land use around the Beltline, for instance, prohibiting gas stations, prohibiting drive-throughs, removing parking minimums, while all that work was still going on. And so I would still like to see the department think about how we can make some progressive changes in terms of our curbside management, our parking management policies beyond what is being envisioned for CTP. Maybe there's an opportunity to do something concurrently, but I just want to make sure that we're moving the needle as quickly and as aggressively we can because these are issues that people are dealing with today. With that being said, what's the timeline that y'all are thinking as far as the, when will we have a final CTP for adoption in this body?
Yes, so we're anticipating an 18-month process for the CTP, and it's primarily because it's a huge effort, right? We're planning for long-term, and there's an extensive amount, similar to what DCP did with Plan A. There's an extensive amount of public engagement that has to happen. We want to meaningfully and purposefully engage and have conversations with the right stakeholders, and that sometimes takes time. So we are anticipating about 18-month process. So likely early 2027 is when we're expecting a final kind of delivery and adoption.
Okay, and so I think that drives my point home a little bit in terms of the need to try to implement some solutions more quickly. On a similar note, will the CTP process impact existing projects that have been encumbered or financed that we haven't completed design yet? I know we have a number of Moving Atlanta Forward projects, whether it's Monroe Drive, whether it's Ralph David Abernathy in Mechanicsville. We have federal funding assigned to Central and Prior. Will the CTP process impact the design work for those projects?
It will not. Really, the CTP will be focused on what is the next generation of projects? What comes next? What is the major financing that needs to happen to deliver those projects? But it is focused on after moving Atlanta forward.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. And then just going back to my comment on the timing. I know enforcement is a big concern amongst myself and my colleagues and some members of the community with the RFP itself. I know Councilmember Faroki had a big send-off earlier this week, and he has been very adamant to see what we can do to ensure that we have better enforcement of travel lanes, bike lanes, people parked in the right-of-way folks and parked on sidewalks, and seeing what we can do to ensure that that's part of this RFP process. Recognize that's where there's a huge friction point with our curbside management, and there's an opportunity for, I mean, if you're a cyclist in the city, you run into somebody blocking the bike lane just about every single day. So I know there's, from a revenue standpoint, there's some amazing opportunities there. Will that be included in this RFP? I know you talked about additional non-uniform personnel to support this work, but it sounded like it's largely through a lens of permitting and making sure people are operating parking lots correctly and that sort of thing versus enforcing vehicles parked in travel lanes or places where they shouldn't be.
Definitely, and that's where the redundancy in services and subs will come in with helping us being able to expand the manpower a bit. I think one of the issues that we've run into currently is just the ability to obtain and attract and retain officers. There's a lot of demand for officers right now, you know, between being on-duty work as well as off-duty work, so there's a lot of competition out there. So I think just the ability to attract enough sworn officers to be able to, you know, have enough to cover our needs has been a bit of a struggle. But again, through this next RFP, we are looking to make sure that the service provider has more than one option when it comes to a security vendor and that if you have multiple vendors that you're working with, the pool of officers expands. And so we do believe that that will help address some of the issues that we're seeing from a capacity standpoint.
Does it have to be a sworn officer to enforce?
The safety violations, yes.
Okay, got it. So I guess then, because I've heard proposals based on what other cities have done, New York, for instance, has only called a bounty program, but essentially is empowered citizens to report those sorts of safety or moving violations. If I'm in a bike lane, I see a UPS truck blocking the bike lane, I can take a picture, submit it to a database, and then a ticket is issued based on the visual verification. We wouldn't be able to do something like that in the city as a stopgap or as an enhancement measure?
From my understanding, no. But I think that is a conversation we can continue to have to see if there's a workaround. But from my understanding, I don't believe we're able to do this civilians at this time.
Okay.
There are also safety and liability concerns related to, you know, empowering citizens to do that. So that's something we're keeping in mind as well. But it's an active conversation.
And then just one more comment on enforcement. Has there been any conversation or thought or discussion around enforcement in low-demand areas? And I bring that up because, yes, you know, in downtown and midtown, we have these big events, you know, there's a lot of demand for very limited spaces. But I think what we also see in less commercial parts of my district and some of my colleagues' districts, where we have the issues where people are parked on sidewalks, issues where people are parked in no-parking areas, people are, have a car that is on flat tires and has been there for several months and needs to be moved. And oftentimes, I'll work with our APD partners to make sure we can get some additional officers out to enforce that. But I know, at least on their current contract with ATL Plus, that there should be an opportunity for them to enforce it as well. And so has there, and maybe I'm incorrect about that, but in these lower-demand areas in residential communities that still have these sorts of safety or moving violations, can we ensure that that is also being stepped up? Because even if it's not in the Castleberry Hill or downtown, it's still impacting quality of life for residents.
No, I think that makes sense. And again, it just goes back to allocation of resources that's available. And so the focus tends to be on those high-demand areas. And generally, our team has coordinated very closely with SP Plus around, if we get calls or emails about certain areas that really need some enforcement, we're able to reallocate and work with the service provider to allocate officers to those areas. I think as long as we know about it, we can, we're flexible, and the service provider has been flexible to date with sending out officers where needed. But I think for sure, as we stand up this next RFP, that is a strong point that we have in there is for them to show us that they have the ability to staff as necessary, and that includes those low-demand areas.
And I think to coordination with Mayor's Office of Special Events might help in that as well. If we know there's going to be a big community festival or a big event that, in a community that isn't used to that sort of traffic, I know that's a place where there's a lot of friction, where people are parking in places where they shouldn't be, where people are blocking bike lanes and that sort of stuff, because they're trying to get to this big event. But our system, our framework, our ecosystem isn't geared towards having a larger concentration of our enforcement officers in those spaces because we're so used to being in the downtowns and the midtowns. Question, another question that I had was with regards to city-owned parking assets. Do we have an inventory, and this might be more of a Dean question, but do we know how many city-owned parking facilities that we have and whether or not that will be included as part of? Six.
Six. And you're specifically speaking to like garages and surface lots, yeah. So six, but that, you know, as Calvin was saying, that's managed by Dean.
Okay, and I bring that up because, you know, many of us were just in Savannah for Georgia Municipal Association Conference. Several of us have been in Athens, and both of those communities have. My Georgia Tech friend over here. And we see these municipally-owned and managed parking facilities. And one of the things I've had, I've had this conversation with the Mayor's Office, so with Two-P Street that we're investing in downtown, we've acquired the parking deck across the street from Two-P Street in Marietta and Peachtree Street. How can we normalize and make more predictable parking operations in our downtown footprint by leveraging city assets? And could that be something that we include as part of the CTP? It sounds like Dean is managing this, but it sounds like there's a lot of opportunity to work with Calvin and his team to ensure that we can just make, I know we're talking a lot about curbside, but to me, it's part of a larger ecosystem that we should be thinking about.
No, I think that's a great, that's a great point, and we'll definitely include Dean in those conversations.
Okay. My last question, just going back to the on-street parking piece, is being interpreted as a fee? But I also think about the fact that these curbsides is prime real estate, parking spaces are prime real estate, there's a value to that real estate. By using a fee structure, are we not undervaluing the real asset that we have and not fully leveraging its full value? So, but I see we have some law folks coming up to ask that question, so.
Jonathan Gaul with the Law Department. We've been working closely with DOT on the new RFP and possible changes to the code when possible. But it's important to remember that for parking meters, the state has been very clear that it is a fee, that we have to limit the fee to the cost installation, the cost of installation of the parking meter, the maintenance of the parking meter, and the regulation or the enforcement of the parking meter. That's the fee. That's what we're allowed to charge.
So does that fee preemption impact our ability to do a parking district? So could we use, could we, so setting aside an X percentage of that revenue for community improvements, that sort of thing, is that preemption limit us from being able to do something like that?
Yes, is the short answer. As far as there being a parking benefit district, that's really kind of a separate question, is whether we'd be allowed to do that under law, whether, you know, we'd be limited by the CID statutes, by the TAD statutes, those kinds of things. But to use the parking meter fees to pay for anything other than literally the parking meter and enforcement of the parking meters, then that would be an appropriate use of the parking meters, under state law.
Okay, thank you so much. Mr. Chair, that's all I have for now. I'm sure I'll have some more questions. But DC Smooth Madison, thank you so much for taking my questions.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Wes Moreland.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you all for the presentations. A few questions. The 2021 curbside management plan, how does that, how has that, if at all, factored into the conversations that you all have had internally? And how will it impact the writing of the RFP?
Yes, it definitely has influenced the elements that are in the CTP. There are specific recommendations in the curbside management strategy such as increasing officers and manpower. Again, we've spoken to the redundancies and subs, integrating performance targets. And so that was something I mentioned around having very strong KPIs in this RFP that requires the service provider to report out on quarterly. So again, that was a result of the recommendation in the curbside management plan. The data sharing was another recommendation, making sure that the service provider provides regular report outs and whether it's weekly, bi-weekly, or monthly reports of data parking utilization, all the good data that comes from them. So we've been able to integrate that into the RFP. So it has definitely impacted, and we've integrated what we can.
Similar question with the three stakeholder groups that I think all of us have heard the most from, Propel, Central Internet Progress, Midtown Alliance. What conversations have any of we had with those groups? Or do we intend to have to get their feedback before something goes on the street?
We will not have the opportunity to do any extensive public engagement before releasing the RFP. But there has been conversations that have happened over the years where we've been able to really understand what the needs are. The curbside, the curb management strategy that was done by ADID, there are a good bit of those stakeholders involved in that process. And so we've been able to utilize that and pull that in. But I think, again, the CTP is going to be the greatest opportunity to really engage with key stakeholders and understand what some of the greater needs are. I don't believe it will preclude what we have already put into the RFP, but it will help us understand what, you know, some of the other specific technology needs and curb demands are and be able to pull that in later.
No opportunity to engage at all, or not enough time to do something extensive?
Not anything extensive. I think, you know, we engage with them regularly. And so if there is something specific that they would like to inform us about, we're open to that. But I don't believe that we'll have time to do that before we release an RFP.
This might be a question for the Law Department, and it might be, I need to get back to you, we need to do a deeper dive. How do we think cities like Decatur and Marietta and Macon are allowing non-sworn people to issue citations?
Yes, John Gaul again. We've issued a legal opinion, Amber Robinson, and obviously, the city attorney has passed that on, and we can provide that again. But the bottom line is, at least for my recollection for Decatur, is we're not actually, they're not actually allowing non-sworn officers to do anything different than what we're allowing them to do. They are just strictly related to parking and parking enforcement.
Okay, if you could send the legal opinion over, we'd love to take a look at it. Toward the beginning on Slide something, you referenced we're seeking a highly qualified service provider that has experience in mid- and large-sized towns and cities. How many providers is that as we look over the country? How many folks do we actually think are going to be interested in talking to us about this?
Typically, what we look at is the population size that's baked into the RFP, and then we go from there. But roughly, four or five that actually can do what we need. You'll have some that come in and try to pontificate what they want and can do, but it's typically four or five.
Okay. On the slide before that, when it talks about leveraging technology for deployment for the things that otherwise sworn officers would have to do, the things that otherwise sworn officers would have to do, the company is going to develop that technology? Like they're going to put the camera out or we're going to put the camera out?
Currently, we're into a pilot with automotives without a service provider. And so what we do, work closely with our service provider in automotives. And we realize that it's going to take more than those two. So as we stand up this next RFP, you'll have different technologies that we will bring forward to you guys. But at the same time, it's that open API system that we're relying on to have that real-time data for us to push down. So right now it's just automotives, but we know from what we've talked about and discussed over the last years or so that it's going to take multiple teams out there. It just won't be one cookie cutter. And we've found throughout other cities, there's just not one cookie cutter that can address this.
And so the way it would work is if a camera picks up somebody blocking a bike lane or a hydrant or a sidewalk or a crosswalk, an alert would happen and then we would have to send a sworn person to issue a citation.
Correct. So right now in those five corridors, we do have automotives and we did pretty extensive discussions on that throughout the year. And we know real time that whether it's pedestrian, a car, or a bike in that lane. But what we found out for right now, within five minutes, we can't deploy an officer out there to, you know, issue that citation. They're gone.
On the slide after that, which references KPIs, could someone talk a little bit more about that? What we think they might be or how we're going to develop them if we haven't yet?
So we want to always stay compliant and we don't want to be predatory. That was a challenge in this current contract. But we realize that, you know, us being compliant may seem predatory to folks, but we try to be fair about that. But those KPIs that we use is, you know, less errors. We look for three things on those things once they issue that citation, the citation on the vehicle, that license plate, and the infraction of that. So we do have things in place where we try to eliminate their errors and what they issue out there. There's a 3% margin of error that they can use that our team monitors currently right now. But we will develop more KPIs going forward because one of the challenges is we have handheld Winnipeg's right now. Those written tickets, they kind of just sit somewhere. They don't really, we can't really move those tickets because there's nothing behind them. So if a person decides to contest that, there's no real data behind it. So we want everybody to be in compliance with the handhelds, know what the infraction is, and make sure it's legible too. So that's one of those things that we use.
So there'll be key performance indicators written into the RFP that say this is how we're going to view success over the course of this contract?
Yes.
We have about 10 or so specific KPIs that are written into the RFP. Everything from number of customer complaints to number of tickets issued in error, as Calvin was mentioning. And I can't read off all of the KPIs right now, but again, it helps us understand like where we need to make improvements and also how the service provider is meeting certain requirements that we've stated in the RFP. So we have some very definite KPIs that are written in there.
Is that list of 10 a shareable document?
I think so. It's a part of the RFP, so I'll have to just make sure, I'll check with procurement law and make sure there's no issues with sharing that. But yeah, I think we can at least summarize for you.
Okay. And then last two. One is, could you talk a little bit about revenue sharing and what the thinking is on how that will be included in the RFP? So that's question number one.
Yes. So currently, the way the contract is set up now, there is an 80/20 split between the city and the service provider. So after all administrative costs, bills are paid, we, the City of Atlanta receives 80% of the meter-generated revenue and the 20% goes to the vendor. So there's also currently in the contract, a annual threshold of seven, kind of $7 million. So once we've met that $7 million threshold, we were able to negotiate in 2020, as we stood up ATL DOT, that anything over that $7 million would go specifically to our safety mobility fund. And so as we stand, roll out this next contract in RFP, we will likely have a similar kind of minimum threshold. But the adjustments that will be different will be based on that revenue share. So we are looking at changing that to higher than the 80/20.
So right now, the city gets $5.6 million a year. The company, SP Plus, gets 1.4 and anything above the seven goes into the safety and mobility fund.
The city gets seven, okay. The city gets $7 million.
Got it. Okay. Does anyone know what the overage was this last year? Okay. Last question. You mentioned cycle 1.0 and 2.0 earlier. How do we, as a department or a city, balance revenue needs versus the need of like a bike lane, right? So as we look at a street and in one of those cycle plans or in any of the other plans that council has passed over the last several years, and we're following all of those as we repave streets downtown to add those bike lanes in, as we think about the future, where do we come down on, you know, we're going to have, there's like parking on this street now, but really there should be a bike lane? And how do we make that decision?
Yeah, I believe that's really a part of the CTP process and really engaging with communities and stakeholders to understand where those primary corridors are based on different users. So we'll be able to understand like what are the primary routes needed for trucks? What are the primary routes needed for transit and dedicated transit facilities and the same for bikes? And so the CTP process is really what's going to help us understand and start to develop those priorities as well as modal priorities, what's, I don't want to say what's most important, but understanding the needs of those various streets and starting to design based on those needs. We have data. We get a lot of great data back from our micro-mobility program as well as parking. So we know where the high utilization, we know where the demand is, we know where scooters and micro-mobility devices want to be, or even where they are kind of forced to be right now because that's where facilities exist. But we have the data and using that data to help inform what the priorities are for specific streets.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember One.
I want to kind of keep going on where Councilmember was, Moreland was talking about though in terms of, doesn't our current contract though, if allow for or designate a certain number of metered spaces? And then if we make any changes to that, then that impacts the contract itself? At least that's how it was set up in 2017.
You're correct, Councilmember One. And over the years, we've created that buffer. And so it was costly starting it up. So we never get to that point where we're below that buffer. If we are at that, that's when we were having those conversations. So it's been years where we went below that.
So it's a floor, not an absolute number? And so so long as we stay above that floor, we're good? So we do have flexibility that if we found ourselves wanting to make a policy decision that, hey, sorry about the meter spaces here, it's better suited for a different use than, so long as we fall within that?
And that's why, yes, and that's why we've started the expansion conversations because there are things that we do take offline, but we're real conscious of that threshold that we have to meet. And so it's been years before we went below that.
Good, because there is, I need to have a conversation with y'all offline about a potential change in some metered spaces in my district. This has been very eye-opening for me and I love the comprehensive approach to it. I think where I get anxious and where we all do is just the time on it. I mean, this package especially, it's like, God, it'd be nice to have it now. But the lead time that's built in for the RFP release, I have my skepticism about procurement right now. What can we do in the interim? What can we do with our current contract to start asking for an amendment or something or adjustment to incorporate some of this? My district is mostly around enforcement and I wasn't sure from the Law Department if the non-sworn can do parking infractions or no, that has to be sworn, or if it was just more serious ones.
I really enjoy the looking back and forth.
I apologize.
No, I was, what was the opinion? I mean, I know you're going to send it to us, but what was the decision on or recommendation on whether non-sworn could enforce parking violations?
Generally, no. And we'll resend it to you, but the, I mean, the real simple answer is when we look at whether, even in our code, whether it's considered a criminal or a civil penalty. If it's a civil penalty, then a non-sworn officer can do so. If it's a criminal penalty, then it has to be a sworn officer or code enforcement. So from a parking perspective, non-sworn officers can do that. From, you know, parking meters perspective, anything that would be, fall within the state's state law, that's a, that has to be a post-certified. If it's a criminal penalty within our code, you know, basically the opportunity or possibility that someone may go to jail for it, then it has to be a code enforcement officer.
So think something like residential permit parking violation, civil or criminal?
Off the top of my head, I believe that it's a code enforcement officer can do that.
Okay. So in that example then, I mean, can we have a conversation with SP now about amending our, again, I think we're still a year, probably 18 months out. I'll be honest with you, before all these great things are going to happen. And in the interim, we've got, as Councilmember Dozier said, all these different pressures that I feel like we could start addressing now if we really were committed to it. So, uh-oh, I see the commissioner signaling too.
Sorry, I've been, I've been holding back. You see a lot of eye contact back and forth. Thank you for these questions because I think we're wrestling most with enforcement and we know it's been an ongoing conversation. So don't want to mislead you in thinking that we're not having the conversations with APD. We've started the engagement and considering APD's recruiting classes are going way up. I think they're going up to 18,000 hopefully here soon. Hopefully there'll be more resources in terms of swearing in officers, but we're also looking at how we can support them in being able to have officers designated from a revenue standpoint, just, just for making sure that they have the numbers and the capacity to support us. So that conversation has started. We're going to continue that conversation. But to your point, you know, why are we waiting to address issues that are ongoing now? Chairman Amos of Transportation Committee, we've sat and had conversations with APD about the events on the west side and solutions and working with APD. We've had staff out during events. We've come up with some reasonable solutions that we should share and have a further conversation about residential and impacts throughout the city during major events at Piedmont and in other parts of the city. Obviously, parking's a priority. We've preempted our vendor to make sure they have folks on staff and APD to make sure that they're available for those, especially given the complaints that come in from residents. So that conversation is ongoing and, you know, we talked about micro-mobility, which has been a challenge. Hopefully, folks are seeing a difference on our streets as we've been working with the vendors to make sure that the geocoding is in place. When I ride with my girls, there are certain places I can't park, there are certain speeds I can't hit. So you're starting to see a ramping up of, or following through of some of the issues and making sure we hold the vendors to what they promised and also if they're not addressing those challenges. But going back to enforcement, yes, enforcement is one of the main focuses of our future in this contract.
You said, you said future. Again, I'm, that's great, but I'm, we're 12, we're 18 months out from that. So, you know, is, is our current vendor unable to, unwilling, doesn't have the capacity? I mean, I don't, help me understand that because that to me is low-hanging fruit now. I mean, I don't, it's a yes and in terms of APD. I'd rather not use a sworn officer if I can use a non-sworn. Plus, there is the whole challenge of what I call deflection. It is, oh no, it's APD, oh no, it's the contractor. And what ends up happening is nothing. So is there anything that we can do in terms of conversations right now, amendment to the current contract to carry us through the next 18 months?
Yeah. Short answer, yes. And mind you, it's not finger pointing APD or our vendor, it's the City of Atlanta and it's ATL DOT. So I will stand here and say, whatever we need to do to get to that point where we're seeing a measurable difference, let's do that because we have begun the conversation.
Okay. Well, I, I mean, let's have a follow-up on this because I do think, again, this Rolls-Royce model is great, but we got to be able to walk before we can run and before we can be able to drive a car. And I don't even feel like we're quite at walking right now. The other thing I will say too is that the public doesn't understand the difference right now either. And so as we go into these new models or if you're able to figure out an interim fix, then, you know, we got to not, let's not forget them. In fact, because they're the ones that are being impacted and we're the ones hearing about it so that we can't, can't make that disconnect.
And Councilmember One, I totally agree. I'm one of those as a resident and parking is challenging at times. So I agree with you and putting a strategy together to better inform our residents, I think.
Okay. Yeah, my, again, my, I'm excited about this, but my big question is what can we do now? So let's have a follow-up conversation on it. Thank you.
Before we go to the next council member, let me ask a clarifying question. Our residential parking permit, which there's a fine, requires a post-certified officer to write the citation, correct?
It can be a post-certified or a code enforcement at this point. It does not require, but it can't be a non-sworn, but we can do it through code.
A sworn code enforcement officer, so still a sworn officer versus a civilian. And the officers that SP Plus use to regulate or go out and enforce these is a sworn officer and just not a regular, non-sworn person?
Yes, per the contract, they're required to have post-certified officers.
So what needs to be changed is whatever that dilemma between the law, what is civil and what is criminal? And the next question I'm going to ask is, what do we write at the airport when we authorize ATL enforcement at the airport? What is the difference between the citations they do at the airport and the citations we'll be doing in the neighborhood?
The citations at the airport, the simple answer is it's just a completely different regulatory scheme. The permit process that's set up for the, for neighborhood parking permits have its own separate regulatory scheme with its, with its own penalties in place for it. So it's, it's a separate issue. The airport is the airport, it's not within the right of way necessarily. We have different opportunities to regulate that way. And my understanding too is that many of the officers, the parking enforcement officers out there are, are qualified under state law to enforce citations under state law. But either way, it truly is just a separate regulatory scheme.
Right. And please don't use the word scheme. And yes, they are, because we changed it, what, a month, I mean, a year, year and a half ago to allow officers out there to be able to do that. So I'm seeking the same thing my colleague, Councilmember Ron, is doing. What do we change on the, on the neighborhood enforcement side? But we'll get to that because it sounded like an ongoing conversation. So do, yeah.
Is that an option? I mean, can we move the residential permit parking into the civil side?
There's that potential for that. That requires a code change that we would have to get more involved with.
I know. Councilmember Amos and I will co-sponsor it, I'm sure. Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Ron, back to our.
Thank you. I will start with my first question. I was, I'm glad to hear that you all are talking to APD. Does that conversation include telling APD not to park in the bike lane since it's a violation of city law?
You just told them, thank you.
And in that case, can we swear in non-civilians to ticket APD because there's obviously less of a risk of them getting shot with that than going up to a random civilian who, in an open carry state, would be dangerous? So I think it's a great idea to get choice constituents to be sworn in to ticket APD vehicles that they see in bike lanes, because I have like 20 that would jump in from District Five today. No, but thank you. But if we can, seriously though, if we could work with APD to include in their training to stop parking in bike lanes. to stop parking in bike lanes, because there's this magical section called the middle of, the middle lane. I think they're familiar with it and they can, they can park in that instead. And, and that goes for also on the side street leading up to City Hall. Stop parking in the bike lane, park in the middle lane, is that great section with the yellow stripes? You can keep, stop blocking people there. The next question was around towing. So also continue discussion with APD. Currently, our city code, actually, it's not in the code. So I, this is an ongoing discussion with law. I haven't found that it is in the code. But right now, we tell constituents that it's required for APD, for them to call 911, to call APD, that an APD officer has to be on site and order for a towing. This is not the case as I've dove into city code. I don't believe that that is true. I believe that what we should be able to do is what other places do in other municipalities in the state, which is a civilian can call in for an illegally parked car, whether it be in a bike lane, whether it be in front of a driveway, whether it be past the parking sign, and whether it be in front of a hydrant, to call and be able to report that or, I mean, to call A-Tow directly, because that's who's contracted in my district, have them come tow the car, they report it to APD so that when somebody calls 911, they're able to find out where their car is. One, increased revenue, two, just safer, three, more efficient. Because right now, APD, why, APD being present doesn't seem like something that makes sense to me. And again, based on my interpretation of the code, that is actually not required to have APD there. So I don't know why we haven't restructured that yet.
We'll definitely look into that a little further. I don't know if you all have any response to that, but.
Sure.
Yeah, we'll, we'll definitely follow up with you. There's, you have to, just as a refresher, we, not only we have to worry about our code, we also have to worry about Title 32 and Title 40 when we're dealing with things in the right-of-way.
Could you expand?
Title 32 deals with the state, county, and municipal roads and what we are authorized to do on those. For example, the parking meters, we're authorized to install parking meters on our right-of-ways through Title 32. And then Title 40, Title 40 is, deals with the regulation of vehicles on the right-of-way. To the extent that we don't touch it on in our code, it's still maybe within there. So we just need to verify that's the case.
Understood, and, and thank you for that. I will say that based on the research I have done, that it's not preempted by the state. So I look forward to hearing law's feedback because I do believe that that could be a game changer, especially around places like Chastain Park, Pullman Yards, other areas of our district. The eastern, I have anywhere around any entertainment venue where people are just taking up neighborhood parking. So that seems to me a more immediate and efficient option as we work out a lot of the issues that we're talking about here. Because an immediate, the ability to immediately tow or have A-Tow stage in a location or to be circling a location, knowing that there's going to be illegal parking so they can act more immediately, I think would be, would be a huge one. So thank you, and.
And we're happy to work with you, whatever you need us to do, we'll work with you.
I appreciate that. Whatever feedback you can give, I would, I would greatly appreciate. So I'm not a lawyer, I just reach out to them. So thank you. In terms of the, going back to parking improvement district, for areas like Sweet Auburn, for example, where we are, I would argue, a very neglected corridor, and I'm really grateful to ATL DOT for all the work that you all are doing over there. We'll take a quick moment to celebrate the groundbreaking of Jackson Street, of Jackson Street Bridge again, so congratulations on that, thank you. And that we have Edgewood and Auburn coming. But for something, there are no metered parking or not really any metered parking in the area. Obviously, I know the immediate fear that small businesses will have. I don't think we have that issue in Sweet Auburn, but metered parking in that area and the area that is incredibly neglected, because we were looking at doing a CID and that got killed by the SSD when that was put in. A parking improvement district seems like we would have the ability to utilize those funds to keep them in that community for much-needed infrastructure repair, given that it is on the highway, that it's a, that it's a massive cut through. That infrastructure is, even though we're about to repave roads over there, is going to take hits pretty immediately. So wanted to hear your feedback on places like that, East Atlanta, other commercial notes.
Yeah, no, I, I fully agree. I think there's a lot of opportunities across the city for those parking districts. We're interested in it, but I think there's more conversation and coordination that just to have, that needs to happen, just to understand the ability to move those forward. But again, we also want to know what are the areas that are qualified for those or what are the areas that really.
When you said qualified, what would, what are the qualifications for PID?
And maybe qualified is the wrong word, but understanding the, the need, the demand, the ability, what structures exist there today, whether there is a CID or not. So I think just understanding what those areas are, where they are, and what the needs are, I think we can better have more informed conversations and the CTP will help us with that. We are, I think, in the very near term, immediate term, as far as things that we can do now, we, you know, as mentioned before, we have 2,600 spaces online right now. We are looking for expansion areas. There's opportunities for upwards of 1,000 more parking spaces that are currently offline. And so we are looking at where those expansion opportunities are. And I believe Sweet Auburn was one of the neighborhoods that we've identified.
Feel free to make that your number one.
So we are looking to work with you all to roll out a potential expansion. And so more forthcoming related to that. But I think ongoing conversations related to the parking districts.
Understood, and I, I'm going to echo the, the CTP piece on another 18 to 24 months. There's really no way that we can move up the timeline on at least a few of these pieces.
I think, I think there's opportunity to do that. We'll look at what can be done now with the current contract.
Yes.
And so we'll, we'll circle back to you guys to see what, what we can do. Even as we work through the CTP and we identify high-priority things that can be implemented, we don't have to wait to complete it to do that. I think we, we will, we're interested in seeing how we can roll things out as we go along.
Got it. And I appreciate that. When you say circle back to us, and I'm sorry, Betty, I'm sorry, Deputy Commissioner, because kudos to you all for being able to do all this while also prepping for FIFA and moving MAF dollars and everything else. So I'm very grateful to you all and I know that you're doing a lot. So I know it's a hard question to answer, but is there any time range or timeframe that you can give us in terms of when that circle back will take place?
Give us 30 days or so to have the conversations. And then I think we can at least come back or at least provide you guys with an update on how those conversations went, what needs to be done, at least start to lay out the steps that need to occur.
Okay.
And I think we can at least provide an update related to that.
Great, thank you. And I was going to come back to, I'm touching on some of that with, given the parking meter piece and how we're talking about it. I mean, you were talking about it being a fee. And I was curious if we're currently making as much revenue as we're making. It sounds like it's more about how that money is expended and, I mean, so it goes to the general fund today?
It's a, just to clarify, the actual, and correct me if I'm wrong, Betty, the actual revenues that are being generated are a combination of the fees and citation fines, the fines that are collected, which are not insignificant portion of, of it, of the percentage of the actual, what the contract considers the revenues that are generated. From that perspective, it's, it's a little off as far as, you know, it's almost apples and oranges when we're talking about the parking meter fees versus the revenues that are generated by the contract. So with that in mind, if you, if you could restate your question, sorry.
Well, first of all, can we see a breakdown of everything you just described?
I believe you can. I, that would have to come through the department.
Okay, Commissioner, or DC, whoever wants to run to the, you both seem eager to approach the podium, so whoever gets there first.
Yeah, I think we have that data.
Thank you. DC, can you, can that be provided within the next week, if possible?
I think so.
Yes, thank you. David, would you mind making a note of that, please? Thank you. And so what I was asking was, it seems like it would simply be just a raising revenue issue. So I'm, I'm a little confused as to what the pushback is on, on increase. So we don't have a legally defensible fee study yet? Okay, okay. I look forward to the breakdown of the numbers, but also I wanted to circle back to not using non-sworn for enforcement, as was pointed out to me in Decatur Code. It seems that they are using vendors. And I remember you mentioning before not using, that other cities in Georgia are not using non-sworn personnel.
It, maybe I'm misunderstanding the question. My, my intent was basically that they are using, and we're forwarding the, I actually have it, I'll forward to you as soon as, as we can. But, but it, my understanding is that they are using non-sworn officers for parking-related issues, similar, very much how we use our vendor for parking meter-related issues. So it's, the point being, they're, we're not doing it, they're not doing it any differently than we are.
Okay, okay, thank you. And looking at, you were talking also about, and DC, I was really happy to hear you mention the piece on navigation systems with trucks. So obviously, we have major cut-through streets. I know every single one of us deals with it, especially right now in my district, and I'm, and I believe in District 6 especially because of all the, all the construction. And so when I initially tried to look at this, because, you know, Fayetteville Road and some of these other places that are grinding down the streets and actually beginning to affect foundations of homes, we tried, I tried, you know, obviously, we do the no-truck signs, doesn't work. But looking at their navigation systems, I, I came to find through RRT and RGIS teams that each of these truck companies have their own built-in navigation systems that they use. It's not all on one set, not all on one, like, there's not one. They're not all using Waymo and Google Maps. And so my question is, how are we going to assist with the navigational systems when we, when that is, that seems to be an issue? Where, where will that information be found? How will it be utilized? How will it be enforced?
Yeah, I, I think we, once we've confirmed and kind of done the exercise of identifying what the priority routes are, we can definitely make those maps available to companies and place it online, share it out to businesses, to be able to share with their vendors and contractors. I think the biggest issue you run into is trucks, while they are supposed to use the truck routes for their primary access, if they need to get to a home to do a delivery or if they need to get to, you know, if it's a moving truck, you're going to have those trucks that go down streets that aren't necessarily programmed as truck routes. And even if they're signed as no-trucks, you're still going to get a little bit of that because they may be going to a neighborhood grocery store. And so you do get.
They also seem to have trouble reading the distance or the height on the cross-street tunnel as well. They seem to make that a mistake every week. I think they would have learned by now, but no.
But we do have the GIS capabilities to, to map routes, destinations, and where they should be, and we would be definitely willing to share that out. It's going to take a, you know, I don't want to make it sound easy. It's going to take a lot of coordination.
I don't imagine it's easy at all, based on the research I've already done to this.
It takes a lot of coordination. And I don't know if we'll be able to meet with every trucking company that's out there as a part of CTP. But again, that is our goal, to at least start having those conversations and understanding the broader needs and make decisions based on that and then share out the information and try to minimize it, but it may not completely eradicate the issue.
Okay, and is there, have we better systematized a way to actually track down these trucks when they, when people send them in these fines? I mean, we have major, I mean, we are obviously, the city has to pay for it. We're having our sewer drains destroyed, curbs taken out, fences destroyed. I just recently had a truck run into a light pole that had a light on it that crashed into a window and destroyed half of a building in a small business. So I'm curious, is there a way for us to actually pursue fines against these companies rather than the city having to foot the bill for the infrastructural damage they do?
Yeah, I know there are processes in place. We've actually had recent conversations with Risk and Law around that. We were fortunate to be able to obtain a couple of videos recently that showed trucks damaging our infrastructure. And we immediately followed up with Risk about how we can pursue. And they laid out a process for us and we are pursuing that. So I think we'll see how this goes. This is our first time kind of obtaining a police report and then filing it with Risk and, and kind of following the process. So we'll have some lessons learned and I think then we'll be able to see how we could do it more systematically.
Great, okay. And in terms of, I wanted to circle back to corral maintenance and corral installation. Are we factoring into the budget regular maintenance of corrals? And if so, who is doing those checkups? Because I know, I mean, John, I think you're, you know, by, by department store, we've had trucks take out those corrals a couple of times. So curious as to if there's going to be follow-up maintenance and regular maintenance and if y'all are budgeted to do so.
Yeah, so we are strategizing. We do have funding available through our Safety Mobility Fund to do maintenance. I think the best thing, and I, I shared this in the Fatal Crash Review Commission, is finding out the best strategy with the most efficiencies, whether it makes sense to send our crews to make adjustments to one, you know, bike rack, is that the most efficient? Or can we utilize contract forces to do some of that? So those are things that we are evaluating right now.
Got it.
And I think, once we kind of see what pricing we get back from contractors, the time it takes to send out a crew, once we analyze all of that data, we'll be able to better kind of put together what the best strategy is.
Thank you. And in terms of like scooter contracts, I know a lot of other cities, it was the top three bidders and closed it off to other, to other scooters. And this was first introduced, obviously, we had multiple brands of scooters in the city and it was charged, rather than holding the scooter companies accountable, we started basically dispatching code enforcement and DPW to go and collect and fine, which was an inefficient use of city resources. So have we since actually raised contracting prices so that there are companies, fewer companies that have exclusive rights to deploying their scooters in the City of Atlanta?
Okay, I wanted to make sure I understand your question, but John, if you, if you got it, go ahead.
Are you asking just kind of the number of operators that we've seen, yeah, currently? So we have two and we're anticipating one to two for the new RFP as well, but yeah, back in 2018.
Not one to two additional or one to do?
One to two total.
Okay.
And back in 2018, there were seven, nine different operators.
Oh, I remember.
So, yeah.
There was a lot of scooters in trees and off of ledges. I remember it very clearly, not by me, but by the public. And so the question I also have about that is, are we actually charging them appropriate costs to have the benefit of operating in the city? And please tell me that we are not lowballing the number. Because we seem to have a habit of doing that.
Well, so I think your question is, who is responsible for those issues? Yeah, and that's the operators, right? So that's where, we have kind of an internal app that we're happy to share with you for any kind of issues that you see in your, your areas, but also 311, operators are required to respond to those issues that they get via 311 within two hours.
So in terms of, and so my, my question was though, I understand what you're saying. My ask is, I'm guessing that these companies are paying for an exclusive contract in the City of Atlanta. And so I'm asking, are we charging them an amount that compares with other cities of our size or are we under, or are, I think it's a fair question because we tend to do this, we tend to lowball and we have to, I'm asking, are we charging them what we should to operate exclusively in one of the fastest-growing cities in the country?
Yeah, there was a NACTO report from maybe two or three years ago recently that kind of showed where different cities, kind of on a per-trip basis, where they figured across the country. And I think from that, we have identified that there's an opportunity for us to increase kind of what we would expect, that, that goes to the sort of per-trip fee structure that we're changing to.
Great, okay. And just, promise just two more questions. Extended hours on the scooters, which I'm happy to hear, in terms, I know, John, stop sitting down. There's, in terms of, you know, the wheelchair piece, because I obviously have, looking at ADA, looking at things, I mean, from my understanding with people that, that utilize wheelchairs or are wheelchair-dependent, have explained to me that we don't have a WAVE program, that the one, one ADA vehicle we do seem to have in the city is a, is one taxi cab driven by one taxi cab company that doesn't actually advertise it and has no intention of fixing it up. And once it's out, it's out. And I know I've worked with, talked with Uber about this and other things, but do we have anything like that last mile piece? Are we considering, are there solutions for people that are getting off the train at those hours that don't have anyone to come pick them up because they don't, ride share because they don't have an ADA vehicle? Are we, do we have any solutions for those folks?
Yeah, I know, and I don't know if we're specifically speaking to like the micro-mobility options.
Yes, it might not be, it might not fall under you all, I'm sorry.
Yeah, they, they do have ADA-compatible devices that some companies have deployed. And in our RFP, we have requested that they, you know, provide the latest and greatest technologies and devices that's available. So as of now, we don't have any ADA. Okay, we can circle back to you as far as what devices are on the ground today.
Thank you.
But I know that is a part of the RFP and making sure that we have ADA adaptable devices. There's also other autonomous options that are coming online. And so we're working closely with our partners at Beltline and to make sure that those autonomous shuttles and vehicles are also ADA-accessible as well and that they are available at hours that are needed, especially those off-peak times.
Thank you for that, DC, okay. I look forward to hearing about that, and I do appreciate it, because I think that's something we, I know you all are focused on, but as a community, we don't tend to talk about, so I appreciate that. And my final question, everyone's favorite topic, Waymo. So on the way here, I saw Waymo like hit a curb and actually stopped in the middle of traffic and hold everything up. It didn't seem to understand where the lines were. So again, with micro-mobility, what we're going to do, and I understand they're supposed to stop in front of pedestrians, there's all of those things, but as we know, they're piloting it here to work out the kinks. And so there's always going to be a period of, of growing pains. And so we asked about this, where obviously, the regulations are set by the state, not by us. But when we see challenges to micro-mobility because of these cars being in their testing phase, what is the way, I know we talked about it on the Fatal Crash Review Commission, but do we have a way to better report that? Has Waymo made that available? Will the city create something for micro-mobility issues? I'm getting a flow, like, I'm starting to get increased emails about issues that people are witnessing, and they want to give feedback so they can help. They, you know, and so I want to understand where we can consolidate that information to see how we can better improve autonomous vehicles, which is not my favorite thing, coming into this community and ensuring that we are providing the best safety options for our pedestrians and cyclists.
No, we, we agree. I think, you know, as mentioned, that we are pretty limited in what we can require them to do, due to state code. But we have requested for them to share data with us, especially around incidents, safety interactions, and even conditions, like the, you know, on-the-ground asset conditions that they're identifying.
Okay.
To provide us with that data. So we've asked for it. We'll follow up with them to see if, you know, they can make that available. But again, we, we are pretty limited in being able to require them to do it. I know for sure, you know, Waymo specifically, they did a year's worth of testing. And so I'm not sure what some of the, I can't speak to the specifics of what the issues are, but, but I think we're very interested in receiving that data, so.
Understood, and yeah, I know, I know for us, they don't seem to understand how the Crogue Street Tunnel or the Crogue Street to cab intersection works. And that makes me nervous, because we have a pet crossing there, and it's so active. It's so heavily utilized at all times of day. But thank you for that feedback and understanding. Just to express to the, again, to the public, we have no ability to regulate, but what we can do is make notes of areas where there are striping issues, bar, like white bar issue paintings, since they seem to operate mostly off of that. So I will continue to, to follow up, and I appreciate you all. And that concludes my exhaustive list of questions.
Thank you. A lot of my questions, that's been answered, but do have a couple of comments. I, like my colleagues, is very concerned about the timeline, about the CTP. I see transportation, I see legal. Is anyone here from procurement? And unfortunately, that may be what happens when we get ready to release this RFP. If everybody's not in the same room together, and I understand the urgency that you hear from all of us. What happens when we get everyone together, legal together, transportation together? It gets to procurement and gets stuck. And the reason I talk about that, because we're talking about kicking off the CTP at the end of the year, probably having the micro-mobility out and the on-street parking at the end of the year. The people that's planning this process, have you took into consideration council recess? The holidays, not only for the people in this building that have holidays, but also the vendors who must respond? Because procurement is known to send out RFPs in which we have, and the questions answered or respond to during the holiday period. Our vendors have to do that. And then also, we're doing all this to be ready at the beginning of the year. So we have to have everyone together moving. And then, I just think we putting the cart before the horse. If, as we talk about the CTP being the future of moving Atlanta forward, if we build that on problematic issues and situations now, then the CTP would be problematic. Perfect example, how do we talk about scooter parking zones and where they go in the CTP if we haven't created them yet? Or if we do create them, how do we, are they just going to be grandfathered in into the C? So what would change, the CTP or the existing regulations?
What would change? You're asking what would change?
If, if we're doing the CTP and we get to where we know we need it up, and I hate to keep picking on scooters, a scooter parking zone here, will we create the CTP to, create that scooter parking zone? Or would it, we say, okay?
So it's the regulations, and, and basically, if we identify a specific zone, whether it be a flex zone, or a curb, a commercial loading zone, or a scooter zone, really, it's just a matter of implementing them and putting the signage out to designate those spaces. So there may not be any necessary code changes that would have to happen to designate those zones. It may be a little bit different with the commercial loading, so we'll work through, through, as I mentioned before, we're looking at that specific code to see what changes need to happen. And hopefully, we can make that now, so that when we do have identified spaces and zones, we can just go ahead and roll them out. So I think that helps with the timing that you're speaking to, queuing things up now. And we're doing the best that we can to do all of the coordination that needs to happen with procurement, and law, and other, executive office, other stakeholders, to make sure everything is in place, so that when we do complete the fee study, even if it's a matter of getting legislation ready and having the majority of the language put together, so that we can, you know, bring it before you as soon after that fee study is completed. So I think it's just a matter of doing a lot of that coordination now, putting together documents that need to be done now, so that we can roll it out later when we need to.
Well, thank you. I'm glad you used the term queuing things up. So let me queue you up on the CTP. Can we do a half-mile radius around our sports entertainment complex as far as what traffic looks like? And what I mean by that is, can we create some do's and don'ts of a traffic plan? We have traffic plans created by the Congress Center, the Benz, and State Farm by non-APD officers who don't know our external streets. I am more, I would like to see me and my neighbors get home and be concerned about that more than someone leaving one of these events to get home. Right now, they use the main arteries, and they dump everything into Vine City, English Avenue, and of course, downtown. We, as the city, need to direct whoever is creating the traffic plan on some do's and don'ts of moving traffic around. Then people say, oh, it's a one-time experience, it's only a concert. It's a one-time experience that happens all year long, because after football season, there's basketball season. After basketball season, there's concert season. So it happens all year round to the same communities. So that's that on that. Administrative review for parking tickets. First of all, thank you for the enforcement that's taking place in Vine City. Long time coming. Still some things we have to work out around that, because although if we get everyone inside of that residential permit zoning area registered, the majority of that zone is elderly who don't have the ability to go back in and do their guest passes. So right now, my office is collecting tickets from residents that I know. So I'm glad to know there's an administrative review. So if you can get that to my colleagues and I, so we can pass that on to individuals, so we can get that. The pricing parking districts, I absolutely love it. I leave my house, go down the hill. Is anyone with a yellow vest that's got people parking on the street that's paying good money to park on city streets that we're simply missing out on? If they can do it, we need to do it. And so I definitely like that. Last but not least, before we get into questioning, before we get into public comment, when you say subs, are we talking about minority businesses, small businesses, or just businesses who's taking on a smaller part of the contract?
I would say all of the above, because there's, there will be the requirement for minority business participation per city.
I need to hear, thank you.
Requirements, but yes, for the most part, it is those smaller, more specialized subcontractors.
Just want the ability for our smaller companies in the city to grow, that's all. So I appreciate that, thank you. With that being said, no more questions, comments? Thank you, thank you very much.
No problem.
That'll take us into public comment. I see I have three people signed up, you have three minutes apiece. If we are ready to go, Ms. Jennifer Brooks.
Hello again. Just so you know for the record, you are four of my favorite people, and I'm sorry, Council, Commissioner, Councilmember Bakhtiari has left the room. I like, Councilmember Juan, this has been eye-opening. I come away with more questions than answers. I've got a lot of experience, well, a lot, but maybe compared to people in this room, a lot of experience with the curbside parking. So much so that for the last probably five years, I haven't even used a curbside spot. And that's, it took a long time to sort out. My tag is only letters, but they're readers. It took several of me getting ticketed for me to actually walk down there and be told that, well, that's a zero, not an O. Well, it is an O on my, so how did, how did I know they weren't going to be able to read that? The appeals are cumbersome. And I wonder, Mr. Calvin didn't mention, he mentioned that appeals were an issue, but he didn't mention how many appeals are granted versus rejected. And I haven't heard, other than myself, I haven't heard of anybody whose appeal was accepted. And even in my cases, they would send photograph evidence that I was in the wrong, and it was a picture of my tag. It wasn't a picture that said anything about the street signage or anything. So much so that in the neighborhood, hello? In the neighborhood that was behind, like just north of the aquarium, where a lot of staff work, I came across a fellow who was taking a ticket off his window, off his windshield. Well, there was no marking at all on that street or the next street over, and the cars were all being ticketed. There was no signage, there was no curb painting, and this was predatory. And I literally walked him through, he was scared. I mean, he had never, never stood up for himself. He had always paid his tickets, even though, even though he kind of knew there was no signage. He had had tickets there before. I walked with him through the appeals, he was rejected twice. So then, then to go to court, and I went with him to court. He was frightened as all get out. I sat with him, and at that court hearing, the judge said to everybody in the room, if you're here for a parking citation, stand up. He said, go see the clerk, your cases are dismissed. We've got to deal with predatory ticketing. So I didn't hear anybody talk about how careful they are to be sure that predatory ticketing is not happening. I also, because I walk everywhere downtown, and on Sundays, I see people paying at the pay stations. At 11 o'clock, 2:00 in the morning, I see people paying in the pay stations. Why do those pay stations take money when it's free? Okay, that I don't like at all. The data that's coming, and several of the speakers mentioned how important data is so that they know what's going on in the street. I just have a problem when technology supersedes intelligence, because I know what's going on in the street, and I've been given feedback about parking, feedback about micro-mobility for a long time. And I don't really feel confident that these are being fully addressed in what we heard today.
Ms. Brooks, your time is up, if you can wrap it up.
Oh goodness, sorry about that. Yes, I just wish that there would be some consideration. I'd hope to, that Mr. Calvin would have addressed why this is going out for RFP and not coming in-house. I think we could do a better job in-house.
Thank you. Next, I have Mr. Doug Brooks. You love, okay? That brings us to Jeremiah Jones.
Good afternoon, everyone. Jeremiah Jones with Propel ATL, I'm the advocacy manager there. I want to, first, we've heard a lot of strong, thoughtful ideas here today, and I'd like to focus on a key aspect of the RFP, how parking revenue is allocated, and how it can be better supported for our city's transportation equity goals. We recommend shifting away from the current flat revenue model and towards a performance-based contract, one that compensates vendors based on public outcomes. And this includes things like curb turnover and access, fewer obstructions in the bike lanes and sidewalks, compliance and loading zones, equitable enforcement, all the very things that we mentioned here this morning already. Both the initial $7 million that goes towards the general fund and the 20% share that's retained by the vendors, we think disconnects parking fees and fines from the very curb infrastructure to which it relies on. And so we recommend a gradual phase-out of the general fund reliance over the next few years. We want to see the fees and fines and the revenue that comes from that reinvested into maybe ATL DOT to directly support improvements such as sidewalks, ADA upgrades, scooter corral infrastructures, protected bike lanes, scooter lanes, bus stop access and loading zones enhancements. We understand that there are various ways to structure this financially, thresholds, splits, adjustments, tiered systems. But what's clear here is that more of the money collected at the curb should go towards improving the curb. We support a long-term goal of 100% of fees and fines revenue going back to curb improvements. There are plenty of other cities that already implement things like this. We'd love to see a 50-50 reinvestment model, where 50% of that fund goes straight to ATL DOT's citywide mobility projects, and the other 50% is retained within parking districts in those local neighborhoods. Finally, we urge that the next vendor require actively, or be required to actively support micro-mobility parking enforcement, monitoring compliance, helping address blocked sidewalks and ADA ramps, and coordinating with ATL DOT to improve the rider, or to improve the sidewalk overall. We believe this contract is more than meters. It's about making our streets safer, more efficient, and more accessible to all Atlantans. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. That brings us to the end of our public comment, which talks on, that's on the agenda, is next steps. I think we're clear on next steps, so how do we move forward? With the three things I heard today, the CTP, the on-street parking, and the micro-mobility. Any more comments, concerns, questions? Saying none, it is 12:26, 12:27, that's two hours and 30 minutes. Only an hour over my recommended time, but we did it. Thank you, everybody, for making this day happen, and we stand adjourned. And thank you, Mr. Chair.